Okay, we're going to reconvene into the Finance Committee meeting. We have an executive session prior to this, so we have to adjourn from the Finance meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the Finance meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call the February 14, 2022 council meeting to order. Today, we have some special guests with us. We have the Boy Scout troop, 3507, led by Dave Rowland. They're fifth grade scouts. They're trying to achieve their Arrow of Light badge, which is a Building a Better World requirement. They're from First Christian Church out of H.G. Blake Elementary. So if I'd have all the scouts go to the rear of the room to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Legs this way. Thank you, that was great. Prior to starting this evening's meeting, I'm going to take a moment of silence here for William Batchelder III, who served our county at the Ohio House of Representatives for 38 years and was also a judge for six years. So he had 44 years of public service, and he passed away this past week. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Hazeltime.
Present.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting is prepared, the regular meeting of January 24, 2022, is prepared by the clerk. Be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? The clerk, please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will meet again in two weeks. We have several items that we discussed on Finance that'll be on the council agenda next meeting. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no, nothing to report tonight, no, no meeting scheduled for this month, but in April, we're hoping to get together and you get an update from the, what's being planned for this, this coming year from the Police Department, Fire Department and Sanitation Department.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but I will be holding a meeting in March on feeding of wild animals.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing, no past meetings, but we'll be having a meeting here in the next coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Ms. Hazeltime.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing new to report at this time and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, on the Finance Agenda, an upgrade to our storage system and ER and backup systems. We will be moving that forward. We had an ET meeting last week to discuss that, moved it on to Finance, it passed Finance, so it should be on the next council. And at this point in time, we have no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Request for Council Action, we have several items for the Finance Committee. We have 2217 expenditure for state bid MNJ Tech, Dell Computers, Monitors and Licenses; 2218 expenditure over 15,000 solid ground construction, chip home repair; 2219 RFQ and RFPs for fiscal year '22 chip and CDBG consultant services; 2220 accept donation for Marion Susan Murray and Susan Van Epp, MCRC indoor bicycles; 2221 RFPs for liability and property insurance coverage; 2222 conflict of interest waiver for Lindenwood Lake Dam improvements project; 2223 cooperative purchase rubberized flooring at the MCRC Messina floor; 2224 expenditure over 15,000 for Kaiser Corp., MCRC indoor bicycles; 2225 job creation grant agreement for Expert Crane, Inc.; 2226 grant application from the Ohio Department of Development, 629 Roadwork; 2227 petition to join JED South Town Center LLC; 2228 expenditure over 15,000 solid ground construction chip home repair; 2229 bids for job number 1061 Gates Mill Culvert Replacements; 2230 construction agreement for Woodside Green Subdivision Phase II; 2231 expenditure for Baker, Duplikar, Beck, Wiley and Matthews Law Department; 2232, 2021 through 2025 financial audit; 2233 purchase agreement for 368 Foundry Street; and 2234 land acquisition for the airport. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Bill Batchelder, who passed away this past Saturday, February 12th. He was a very well-respected public servant. Hydrants and sidewalks, we're still asking the residents and businesses to clear the snow from the sidewalks for pedestrian and student walking to and from school, the library and the rec center. Also with fire hydrants, it will permit quicker access to the hydrants if there is a fire emergency. And this, this midweek, we're supposed to get some weather up into the 50s, so some of the ice that had been both on the snow and on the pavements should be more easily cleared. I wanted to mention a city and school collaboration midweek last week. There was an unusual situation along East Union Street. The schools always clear the sidewalks in front of the school buildings, but East Union from Spring Grove to North Court Street has a sidewalk literally right against the curb. So every time the snow was plowed, it went up onto the sidewalk, and then we had the freezing rain, changed that to ice and then snow somewhere on top of it. So it physically was not able to be cleared by the residents, so we partnered with the schools, Janssen, Worleys, Parks folks and Nino Service folks, and actually used equipment to clear those sidewalks from the, from the schools to Court Street and from Claggett School to Spring Grove to make a safer way for the children. And I appreciate the schools' efforts and the staff's efforts with that. This coming Friday is the 28th Annual Medina Ice Festival. Starts Friday, February 18th through Monday, February 21st. It's a great event that brings in visitors from all over to experience our carving, city and support our local businesses. Thankful to Elegant Ice Creations for continuing to host this event here. And the title sponsor is Serpentine of Medina, as well as many other sponsors who make this event so special. And then last but not least, I'd like to invite up Michelle Powell and recognize her 21 years as a leader and director of the Let's Make a Difference program in our community. City of Medina Proclamation, Michelle Powell. Whereas we are here today to express, express special recognition to Michelle Powell and to honor her for her distinguished 21-year career with Let's Make a Difference. And whereas in the summer of 2000, Michelle Powell, a single mother of two, began a journey that would ultimately change her life and positively impact the lives of many children. Michelle's first vision of Let's Make a Difference may have been formed using only her limited resources, a few hot dogs, a game of kickball at Mellert Park, but it was the positive feedback from the handful of children to whom she reached out that inspired her to make that vision a reality. And whereas strengthened by her commitment to ministry and her drive to empower local kids to cultivate a love of learning, become good stewards of the community, and build a positive outlook on life rooted in self-esteem and self-respect, Michelle has persevered while developing the Let's Make a Difference program. She has overseen and built a volunteer team who provide children with positive growth through educational, spiritual and creative experience, and will always remain the caring inspiration for Medina's underprivileged kids through her leadership example and gentle guidance. And whereas Michelle will be missed both professionally and as a friend, and has displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals and unselfish service. And whereas, on behalf of the entire city, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Michelle for her dedication to Let's Make a Difference and wish her much happiness as she begins an exciting new chapter in her life. And now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, the Mayor of the City of Medina, urge all citizens and Let's Make a Difference graduates and volunteers to join me in congratulating Michelle on an outstanding career with the Let's Make a Difference and extend to Michelle our best wishes and happiness and good health in the future. And witness whereof, I have hereby caused the seal of the City of Medina to be affixed here to this 14th day of February, 2022, and I present this to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Hanwell. 21 years ago, I walked into this place, and it was on the other side. And it wasn't, I was coming to get an award, actually I was going to be taken away by Medina Police. But there was this gentleman that I know that he would be here today, who spoke some words to me, and that was Jim Bigum, Detective Bigum. And he said to me, "Michelle, sometimes you have to go through the thunderstorm to see the sun shine." And that meant so much to me because my family name was always in the paper, always in the paper. And for him to say that about me and to separate that, separate me from that, made me think of all the lives that I might have messed up and the things that I did. It's never, I'm never here to get a pat on the back, never here to boast myself and to get accolade. All I wanted to do was just to go back in to Union Square, back to the community, and fix what I had messed up. And it's truly my honor to stand here with you, Mayor Hanwell, because before you were mayor, you were also the police chief. And to watch me on this journey and how I transition, I thank you so much. I thank you so much. I thank Paul Rose, I thank Jim Shields, I thank all of you guys, every one of you guys. I couldn't have did it without the support of the community. Really couldn't have did it without my board of Let's Make a Difference because it never, it's never, never ever about Michelle. So it always has to be a teamwork. And everybody knows I love these children more than anything in the world, and I'm very proud that 400-something kids have graduated out of our program. And I pray that that continues to grow. So Medina, this means more to me than you ever would know. And I pray that in my 21 years, I've made you proud and I've made this community proud, and that's all I wanted to do. I thank my brother Mike for being here, I thank Connie for being here. Minister Peterson, I thank you. I thank my son, I thank Amy. And I thank you so much, Dr. Ebner, who has been by my side for the 21 years. And Carol Andre, even though she, she is not here, I know she's here in spirit. And Crystal Magdalas, thank you so much for stepping up and being there and being my friend and doing all that you have done. Mrs. Stone, I thank you so much for being here and supporting me. And I just pray as we continue to go on that we can continue to build a community of love because that's what it's going to take to make a difference. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
I have to follow that? I just, I want to echo what you and the mayor said in regards to Mr. Batchelder, condolences to his family and congratulations to Michelle. I know a number of us have come to your program and it's very impressive what you've been able to do there. And then I just have one announcement to remind all residents that the city does have an income tax. We contract out the collection of the municipal income tax to Rita. If you want forms or to file online, their website is rita-ohio.com. You can get everything there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note, the 2022 edition of the Medina Magazine has been published and is out for circulation. You should have received a copy of it in your mailbox at home, but if you did not, we did put one in your mailbox at work, so please be sure to check your mailbox here. And then also just wanted to extend my condolences and sympathies to the Batchelder family. It was always a pleasure working with Speaker Batchelder on economic development projects. We always got a history lesson during those meetings. And while it was entertaining, it was also very interesting and we were able to accomplish a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
I have no report. Like to join in condolences to the Batchelder family. Had the privilege to work with Bill many times and it was always a pleasure. He's going to be missed.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. 2022 construction is off to a fast start. The Building Department continues to see major investments in the city, not only in residential, also in commercial and industrial. We currently have 19 commercial industrial projects on the book. They include two medical projects, Medina Hospital, two school projects, Medina County Career Center, four industrial projects, three food service projects, six business mercantile projects and two county building projects. These projects include new buildings, additions, alterations and tenant buildout spaces. Six of these projects are on North Court, one is on South Court. This ends my report.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to congratulate Michelle on her accomplishment of 21 years at Let's Make a Difference. You may or may not have an idea how many kids you've affected and how many kids that you've kept outside of our Police Department and the good that you've done in the community. You've done a great job there and you, you've left some big, big shoes that need to be filled to continue on the legacy that you've established. Thank you from the Police Department. We really appreciate it. And I'd like to also offer my condolences to the Batchelder family. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. So congratulations to Ms. Powell for all the good you've done in this community. And I'm sure you're still going to be around helping folks. And then condolences also to the Batchelder family. I'm not going to talk about the snowstorm tonight and all the efforts, except the kids in here tonight. I know they like to have the snow days, so I'm sure it's not over. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items. We had our monthly Planning Commission and Border Zoning Appeals meeting last week. Couple of more significant approvals were a 97-unit self-storage facility on the west side of Foundry Street, north of High Village Carding, as well as an expansion of a daycare center, Bumblebee Daycare on North Court, which is a much-needed additional daycare facilities in town. We were holding our next Copper to Plan meeting next Wednesday. We'll be having some significant updates to our previous drafts, and we'll look forward to meeting with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a confirmation of Mayor's appointment. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission member, Nathan Case, for a term expiring 12/31/25.
Move to confirm the Mayor's appointment?
Second.
Any discussion on the Mayor's appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the Mayor's appointment?
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notices, Communications and Petitions, we have none. On fitness business, there's none. Introduction of Visitors, members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am? In the back, by Kathy back there.
Thank you. That happened today. I'm Sinisa Peterson, Minister Peterson, and I live here in Medina. Been here all my life. But I have a concern because down there by Speedway and across from that little plaza from coming out of Bueller's, when you have to turn into the street, I almost had an accident because if you can't, you can't see that block when you turn into the, what, be the right lane coming from Bueller's and Speedway in that area where they put that new block in between. And I feel that they should have put a sign up there saying "One Way," "Wrong Way" or something, a red, yellow, whatever, so it can be noticed because that could be an accident for somebody that don't know the streets of Medina. And I just want to bring that to your attention.
And you're speaking about turning, going towards Medina, turning left when you come out of Bueller's?
Well, yeah, turning left into the.
Right. So to make a wide enough turn not to hit the median in the middle?
Yes, right.
Okay.
That's a.
Mayor?
Something that may be considered.
So what we had pastor, and it probably with the salt and the plowing has worn off, but we actually had a dashed line that, that shows the channel to follow to get to the other side of the island. And I have a feeling just either with the weather or the salt and the plows combined, it's probably wore the paint off, so as soon as it's permitted in the springtime to paint again, we will do that. But what, what it was is a line that if you follow that line, it takes you right to the lane.
Yeah, maybe you have to, yeah, redo it because you can't see it.
Right.
At all.
And I know up at, we've got the same thing up there where, where at Reagan Parkway.
Yeah.
Going in both directions.
Yeah, and also right there on Harding, and coming off of, what is that?
Highland.
Highland.
Yes, ma'am.
That's another past thing that you need to consider too because people are coming this way towards you.
Yes.
And then the other people may be coming, going out towards Harding or making that left turn onto Court Street.
Correct.
And, you know, somebody can really run into you.
Sure.
You know, so that's something to consider.
Okay, well, we'll talk with the Service Department, get it taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Any scouts? No? This is your opportunity. No? Okay. Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, it entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1422, ordinance 1522, ordinance 1622, ordinance 1722, ordinance 1822, resolution 1922 and resolution 2022.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion on suspending the motion to suspend the rules? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion to suspend the rules?
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1422, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a preliminary legislation with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for a signal timing project on US 42.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council knows, originally this came to us, a request by ODOT. It was limited to just a study of US 42. We requested and they've agreed to expand that study to include all the signals in the historic district. I believe there's 12 total. ODOT will be hiring a consultant to perform this study. The value of that contract is approximately $57,000 and there is no city match for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose.
Now, Mr. Patton, was any resolution to the question I had regarding the railroad traffic coordination with the lights?
There, there are three different connections to the trap, to the railroad between our, our system and the railroad system, so yes.
Okay, so it'll all be coordinated?
It'll all be coordinated, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Ordinance 1422 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1522, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $65,000 to Lake County Sewer Co. for the Street Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this ordinance will allow the Service Department to continue the repairs on our storm sewers, especially the ones that are under pavement, are difficult to excavate and the ones that are deep. We grout, televise and repair with grout. I know Councilman Rose had asked, we're seeing 10, 12 years of longevity with the repairs, so it's a great improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 1522 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1622, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $60,000 to Signal Service Company for the Street Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this vendor handles emergency repairs on the street light poles, the traffic signals, our master cabinets, as in the past we've talked about, we've had unfortunate incidents, truck versus traffic signal poles, like 13, $14,000. And at times, we don't, we don't get reimbursed from the, from the offender. Long as you're rid of it is, we're hopeful that we won't have any in this upcoming year, but this is for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel, Hare, sorry.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 1622 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1722, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure to Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company for the Sanitation Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this ordinance will allow us to continue to get supplies from Goodyear Wingfoot. They supply new and commercial and recap tires to the city and they've been a great provider in the last years and they meet or beat state pricing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 1722 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1822, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a task order number six to the agreement with Delta Airport Consulting for professional services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to the airport ALP and APM, Penna &amp; Inc. update.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Is it Mr. Huber or Mr. Patton?
This ordinance authorizes Delta consultants to update the airport layout plan, which is what I referred to earlier in the meeting concerning expansion of parking hangars with the acquisition of some new ground, new land.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazeltime.
Yes.
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Resolution 1922, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept CARES Act, Corona Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, to be used for any purpose for which the airport revenues may be lawfully used at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. If it's okay with you, I'll talk about the following two ordinances that are both similar. The FAA, during the coronavirus relief period, basically granted the city three different airport grants. We didn't really apply for them, they were just awarded to us. We accepted one of them previously. These resolutions will accept the other two and allow us to spend them.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Hare?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Resolution 1922 passes 7-0.
And finally, resolution 2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept ARP, American Rescue Plan Act, grant from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, to be used for various purposes at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on this one in addition to Mr. Patton's comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Resolution 2022 passes 7-0.
Council comments. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the state award that you received for your illustrious career as a pole vaulter.
Say who you're talking to.
In high school and in college. Took quite a few years for those records to be broken, and I'm sure not only you and your family, but we're all so proud of you.
You're making me feel old.
Yeah.
You are.
Secondly, Michelle, I've known you for years, and you've been so dedicated for the past 21 years. And the only thing I can say is congratulations, and you have made a difference. Thank you. The other thing I'd like to comment on along with Mr. Batchelder that passed, other community members, and Mr. Batchelder's family has my deepest sympathy, and he was very enjoyable to talk to. And as a few people have said, he always give you a good history lesson, and he had a great sense of humor, and I'm sure he's going to be deeply missed by his family and his community. But we lost a few other community leaders in this last week, too. I just found out that Jim Gao from 620, the 620 group on Smith Road, was very involved with our city and a lot of construction projects that happened in our city. We lost him. We also lost one of our community leaders in the school system, Jim Wells, which was a high school teacher and a high school coach. They're all going to be deeply missed, and we're proud of the accomplishments they made in our community. The only other thing is be kind to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council comments? Ms. Hare?
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Michelle, and I waved to her, and she smiled back as she always does, but I'm not sure if she remembered who I was because it's been quite a few years. But I got to see Michelle in action, and she truly did make a difference. And what I witnessed is she truly cared about the youth in our community, and she did a great job. So congratulations and good luck to you. Also want to mention that I've received quite a few emails and phone calls over the last month in regards to the weather and different situations. So I want to thank the residents for contacting me, and I've reached out to them as soon as I could. And if there are any other questions or comments, please feel free to get ahold of me. I do also want to reiterate what the mayor has already mentioned. Please clean around the hydrants in your neighborhood, so the fire department, hopefully they don't have to get to them, but if they need to, they can quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hazeltime?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wrote down my notes, I wouldn't ramble like I usually do. My condolences to the Batchelder family as well as the other community leaders that we have unfortunately lost in the past few weeks. I did want to thank the Van Epps for their continued generosity to the city of Medina, most recently with the donation of the equipment to the rec center. And then I wanted to thank this, basically Nino's crew, for coming out and collaborating with the schools and taking care of that section of East Union because I do drive it every day when I take my son to high school. And it's just really sad to see the kids that don't have weather-appropriate apparel on, and they're going through the snow piles, or they're walking in the middle of the street. And I know they walk in the middle of the street in the summer sometimes, too, but in this instance, I know that they're specifically walking in the street because they can't walk on the sidewalk, so I do appreciate that. And Michelle, you know you have made such a difference in Ward 1. You know you've made a difference. I know you've made a difference. I worked with you when I was at the recovery center. I've worked with you now on council. You know, my kids went to Garfield, primarily the kids that you deal with attend Garfield as well. Everything that you've done for those kids does not go unnoticed. Please know that. I mean, they are very fortunate to have been able to work with you for the last 21 years. Finally, I am probably going to kick myself for this later, but I do genuinely care about residents' feedback. So I have been newly appointed to the Special Legislation Committee, and we will be discussing the Feeding Wild Animals ordinance. So I would ask that you please email me with your thoughts and concerns. You're also welcome to text or call me. Please do not send me an automated message. I prefer personal communication. I want to actually talk to you about the issue and what your concerns are. I don't want to read a form letter that you've passed on from Facebook or wherever else email chain that you thought, I want to connect with you and hear from you about what you think and what solutions we can come up with. So I would ask that people please do that. And I know I said finally, but I was just kidding. I am in the Dancing with the Stars for Faith in Action this year. So I would ask, even if you don't vote for me, that you do consider supporting Faith in Action. It is a great program here in Medina that provides transportation for the elderly. So I know all you guys on council are going to come and support me and vote for me, so thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to go next?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Lamb?
Mr. Lamb's going to Dancing with the Stars, just saying.
Mr. Lamb did Dancing with the Stars one time, and it was the worst preparatory months of my life. I mean, basic training was easy compared to Dancing with the Stars. It was the most stressful thing I've ever done. It made campaigning look like a walk in the park.
It's very hard. I'm doing hip-hop.
When you don't like to dance, you know, and you get real nervous in front of the public if you have to do anything other than just run your mouth, Dancing with the Stars was the killer for me. I think sometimes we should just let Councilman Simpson handle all of our council comments because he does it with such a, he just has a great way about him that's so comfortable and kind, and I always like to hear him when he talks.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Yes, you are quite welcome, and you deserve that.
And I enjoy your conversations.
Yeah.
You're the best. No, you're the best.
That's right.
Anyway, Michelle, great work that you do, and I know you know this, but what you do with young people in this community is recognized, not maybe necessarily today or tomorrow or in 10 years, but it is actually the work of someone building the future and probably the most important part of the future that we have to build, and that is working with youngsters, and particularly youngsters that are maybe in more need than some. And so there's not much we can do in congratulating you that comes anywhere equal to the work that you have done. Life's an interesting thing. I think the lessons that we learn, particularly when we get older, frequently reminds me of our town. You know, we are here congratulating you. We are here with condolences for the Batchelder family.